I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the board.
This is now being recorded.
In accordance with policy BEAA and state law, board members who attend and participate by electronic means shall identify the location from which they are participating and those present. Chris, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Rajpal.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
And Richard, you're supposed to identify the location from which you are participating under our new policy. So you are out of the country. Can you just tell us where you are?
No, I'm not out of the country. I'm in Trinidad, Colorado.
We were trying to figure out which Trinidad you were at.
I went out in the other Trinidad. I'm in Trinidad, Colorado, and I've got my two doggies here and my wife is here.
Okay. That's all.
And I'm in a room in La Cinta.
Thanks, Richard. I don't think we needed to know all that, but thank you. All right, we're following our new policy. Thank you. And I want to apologize to all of the members who have been waiting patiently for us. We usually try to start right on time, and so thank you for your patience and for being here. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, is there a motion to approve our agenda for this evening? Moved by Nicole or Kitty?
Nope, Nicole.
Nicole, that's what I thought. Seconded by Beth. Can you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Niznick.
Yes.
Rajpal.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yeah.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll begin as always with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Gebhardt, members of the board. Good to see everyone today. Just a couple of quick updates because we have some guests today that I know that we're all very much excited about. And though both of my updates are related to the Bear Creek 50th anniversary. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to celebrate with the Bear Creek community, to celebrate the school's 50th anniversary. Now, ceremony had been delayed one year by the pandemic and the Marshall Fire, but it was certainly worth the wait. There were three of the four former principals, several former educators returned. It was just a great, great event. Large crowd of current and former students. And even at the end of the event, students were able to provide tours for many of those former employees that were in attendance. And so I'm very proud to announce that our Bear Creek students will be here this evening for our first inaugural student moment. Now, board members, you may recall during prioritization, we talked about how great it would be for BVSD and for this board to be able to engage our kids in our meetings. And so this is our first attempt at doing that. And so we've invited some students who participated in the 50th anniversary event, and they're going to share some of the pieces they put together for that occasion. So we have with us this evening Principal Tanner Dayhoff, who is going to introduce our students and then share the special activity that you asked them to be a part of for the Bear Creek 50th anniversary.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good evening, board members. My name is Tanner Dayhoff, and I am the proud principal of Bear Creek Elementary. And as Dr. Anderson shared this last week, we got to celebrate 50 years at Bear Creek. Lots of fun, lots of previous staff members. We had a ton of artifacts, and we're actually able to track down some of the board documents approving the creation of Bear Creek, typed on a typewriter on little tiny cards. It was pretty cool. So at our ceremony, each of our classes presented a time box item. Now, a time box is a representation of items from the present that will be opened at a time in the future. Each Bear Creek class was asked to select one item that represents something significant to students today and include a piece of writing produced by the class that explains why they chose that item. The items were put in a bag with the class writing, and the bags were put into the time box. The time box was locked and will not be opened until the 2046-2047 school year, which will be 25 years from last year since we delayed a year. Today, students will present to you the class writing about the time box items, and a couple of them brought items that are similar to what's in the time box, but the time box is officially locked, so you don't get to see those items. Our first students are from Ms. Callio's first grade class, and they're going to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Lucia.
And my name is Mason.
We are from Mrs. Callio's first grade class at Bear Creek.
For the time box, for the time capsule, we chose two of our favorite picture books.
We chose them because they're good and teach people about making the world a little better.
These are the books we chose. Be Who You Are and How Full Is Your Bucket for Kids.
Thank you. Jack.
Hi, my name is Jack, and I'm from Ms. Hawkes' class. We chose a fidget spinner because everyone in our class had one. They were really popular. Here's a short poem. Spinner, spinner, spinners, take away my jitters. Light between my fingers. It looks like it can fly, but when I let it go, it falls on my toe. Satisfy and mesmerize. Buzz, buzz, buzz like a bee. Hocus pocus, help me focus. It can light up in the dark, sparkle or shine like gold, and come in any other color that is bold.
I'm Kaya.
And I'm Sebastian. We're from Ms. Ellis's fifth grade class. Ms. Ellis's fifth grade class chose a homemade cloth mask made from Grogu fabric to represent Bear Creek's 50th year. At the beginning of the pandemic, there weren't enough high-quality masks for the metal cuttle workers, so people made their own using layers of fabric to stop the virus from getting into our lungs. This one was made by Mr. Ellis. Cloth masks worked at the start of the pandemic, but most people switched over to N95 masks to stay safer. COVID really changed school for us because when one person in the class caught COVID, the whole class went online. This means we stayed at home and did all of our learning through a computer. Learning online was hard because our technology was not very good yet, and sometimes we could not get the computer to let us join an online class with our teacher. We had to carry our stuff back and forth between school and home because we were never sure if we would be going into the classroom the next day. We had to be prepared. When we learned online, it was hard to focus because we got distracted by our pets, snacks, toys, and if we were lucky, our friends. Some of us even fell asleep during online class. But the teacher couldn't tell because we left our camera off. In the beginning, it was really scary and sometimes lonely, but now that most people are vaccinated, it's getting better.
And that, board members, is your first inaugural student moment? And that's all I have for superintendent's comments. Quick question before you all leave. Did you all want to come and grab a picture maybe with the Board of Education? Would that be something we could do? Would that be okay? Is that all right, board members? Yeah, we can just come on out here and just take a quick picture?
It was awesome. Thank you.
My first grade if you hadn't done that, I'm very impressed.
It was the student moment.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson based on his report? Dr. Anderson, thank you for doing that. It's been something that I personally and I think the board have wanted to do for a very long time, and it's a great way to start a meeting. It reminds us of why we're all here, so thank you. We'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting are asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the board secretary or Chris Bolkholtz or Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event they affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we will not, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the board. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. This video will be recorded for public viewing in perpetuity. BVSD reserves the right to remove you from the meeting if your video includes material that is inappropriate for the public or BVSD students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. Tonight, we have no speakers, I don't think, on agenda items, so we will start with Robin Selman, and I have in-person and virtual, so I'm not sure what that means. I think this means virtual. All right, then we will circle back and see if she joins. If you can just give me a thumbs up, I'm happy to put her in whenever she shows up. Next, we have Mike Harms. Virtual?
Yeah, hi. Here I am. Hello, BVSD. I'm speaking tonight about a school bus situation. I have two daughters that attend Centennial Middle School. I live in a neighborhood that's called the Four Mile Creek Development. My daughters, this is their second academic year without busing. I have a third child who attends Crestview. Those children do have a bus that picks them up and takes them to and from school. Two concerns. First concern is the burden it places on my daughters and others in the neighborhood not having a bus to Centennial Middle School. The physical burden of books, athletic gear, musical instruments almost makes it impossible to bike, to walk to school without having the bus there. So that is the first concern, and of course, when bad weather happens, it makes the sidewalks, the bike paths extremely slippery. I've heard of students falling, injuring themselves. So there is the burden, the harm, the physical harm. Second concern, not having busing, is criminal activity. Students 12, 13, 14 years old on their bikes, scooters, otherwise, could be targeted by criminals. The bike paths go under, yeah, thank you, Christine, go underneath bridges, underpasses. They could be targeted. Criminal activity, their bikes could be stolen or worse, physically assaulted. So these are the two concerns. I would urge the board to please secure busing for Centennial Middle School. Please look into if a bus or a driver, if not that, see if there's room or extra routes that can be made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Joel Weinstein, virtual, I believe.
Yes, hello. I'm here. I'm actually talking on the same topic, so my name is Joel Weinstein. I've been a resident of Boulder for about 20 years. I have a six-year-old in Crestview, and soon will be or eventually will be in Centennial, so same neighborhood, and I know my team decided to talk today. So I want to say a couple things also in support of the neighborhood bus. I know driver and funding shortages led to some routes being canceled during the pandemic, and I'd like to make a plea to restore those as soon as possible. The bus was just such a huge financial and time release to our family coming from free pay and daycare. We spend an hour a day driving our kiddo around, and bus really helps us financially by allowing us to work something closer to full-time days without paying for aftercare or figuring that out. Gives us more options as dual working parents, and I think therefore it's really important to keeping diversity in workers that can afford to actually live in Boulder and attending these amazing schools that we have. School bus also brings a sense of community to our neighborhood. The kids love it. We all need a bus stop. I know that's the most important matter here, but school buses keep cars off the road. There would be thousands of trips otherwise if we were not doing all the Crestview buses that way. Preserving the environment and teaching our kids, that's important to us as well. It's also, as Mike was talking about, just unrealistic to talk about biking as the main transport mode at least many months out of the year. Sure, it works sometimes, but often life gets in the way and just isn't realistic. So the school bus might not be as exciting and progressive as some of our initiatives, but I think it's fundamental and it's really important. Buses are every bit as valuable as they were 20 years ago, and I'd urge you to please consider bringing back bus routes that were lost during the pandemic. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Neil Fishman, who I believe is in-person.
President Gebhardt, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Anderson, I'm a graduate of the public school system in Colorado, and my daughter graduated from Fairview. But I'm here tonight to address the issue of the proposed recommendations being considered by the Colorado State Board of Education regarding revisions to the social studies curriculum for public schools. As you know, the legislation HB 191192 passed by the Colorado Legislature mandated funding and direction intended to ensure that the standards and programs in public schools accurately reflect the history, culture, and social contributions of underrepresented people, including LGBT Americans, in the teaching and content standards for history and civics. As you are aware, the current proposals, recommended, recommendations, excuse me, for K through 3 grades are almost entirely opposite to the letter and spirit of HB 191192, including removing mention of LGBT individuals. This is an egregious set of recommendations that needs to be turned down, plain and simple. I have every reason to believe the actions taken by BVSD to oppose the proposed recommendations would send a strong message to the State Board of Education. I also firmly believe that BVSD can again, as it has done in the past, stand in leadership in Colorado by building a coalition of school districts in the CD2 region to oppose these egregious recommendations. BVSD leadership in this front would ensure that the State Board of Education would truly realize its mission of providing all of Colorado's children equal access to quality, thorough, uniform, well-rounded educational opportunities in a safe and civic learning environment. And finally, sending a strong message to the Board of Education in opposition of the proposed recommendations is just the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Rayforth, virtual.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Karen Rayforth. I've been a resident here in Boulder County for over 45 years, and I have a child, a grandchild, graduated from Boulder Valley School District as well. I'm asking in regard to what Mr. Fishman just spoke about, about the social studies curriculum and the void of recommendations, void of education's recommendations. I'm alarmed about hearing the removal of references to marginalized, underrepresented, and non-civilized people. And I'm very aware during my career as a psychologist of how harmful that is to being made invisible and what it is now and to their. And I remember that I recall being with a son, child who born a decade ago, to keep the secret about her to mom, and that was not acceptable to many people. Unfortunately, many decades later, it may still be the same problem. One day, she learned that another child had a gay parent, and she went on with her cousin that she had a date with, and it made a big impact on that child and on her, and that it took another child to support. So trying to teach other children to not know about each other and our families and who we are is very detrimental to all children and their teachers, their relationships as well as their effectiveness and civic participation in their life. I want to know, you know, where might we be going with misinformation and lack of information? We need to consider, we're not teaching secrets in social studies, let me consider someone proclaiming the invisibility is such an issue. Thank you for your time. Please oppose the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Glenda Russell.
Good evening. I'm Glenda Russell. I'm a parent and a grandparent of former BVSD students. I'm also a clinical psychologist who's conducted research on the experiences of marginalized students in school settings. In addition, I have taught continuing ed classes for BVSD personnel. I want to address two major issues attached to the coverage of marginalized groups in the social science curriculum at the K through 3 grade levels. The first has to do with students who are members of these marginalized groups. It is awful and disquieting to never see or hear about yourself or your family or your community in school, and many students have this experience. The wonderful poet Adrienne Rich once wrote, and this is a quote, "When someone with the authority of a teacher say, describes the world and you are not in it, there is a moment of psychic disequilibrium, as if you looked in the mirror and saw nothing." If you can feel that, I think you have a sense of what happens when marginalized kids don't see themselves represented in the curriculum. That's an important impact that we have on students who never or only rarely hear about themselves in the classroom. It does damage to these students. To my second point, it also does damage to other students as well, including students who are not members of marginalized groups per se. It gives these students an incomplete picture of their world, and it robs them of the chance to develop skills for interacting with a complete cross-section of their community and the broader world. For these and other reasons, it is pedagogically important, thank you, for these and other reasons, it is pedagogically important and morally imperative that our curricula cover everyone, including those who have been made invisible for far too long. In the interest of time, I've not covered the research related to this issue or these two issues, but I would be happy to direct board members to how the research actually supports the comments I've made. Thank you.
Thank you. Has Robin Selman come back?
No, I'm not here.
All right. Then that concludes our public participation. We appreciate hearing from our speakers this evening. Next, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is board communication. Board members who would like to begin? Richard, we'll start with you.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, great. I just want to thank the speakers that spoke tonight, particularly those that spoke regarding the education content standards and the fact that we are opposing removal of that kind of language from the content standards. I also wanted to say thank you to the students that were there today. I mean, it was great to hear them, and boy, you know, I hope we can get more students coming every board meeting to talk about what they're doing in school and what they're doing themselves. So I truly appreciate that very, very much. Thank you.
Beth?
I want to echo some of the sentiments Richard just shared, starting off with a lot of gratitude for tonight's speakers. I think, I know I share your sentiments regarding the opposition that you spoke of, and I also really enjoyed having the students come in tonight. It really helps to remind us why we're here and keep the focus on, at the end of the day, we're here to improve outcomes for students, and I loved having them here. I think the energy is palatable in this room. I also just sort of, in the last couple weeks, I've been in the community talking with lots of folks about the bond, and I've had the opportunity to really hear some pretty positive feedback, of course, questions, but it's, you know, the conversation's rolling, and I'm feeling good about that. So that's all I wanted to share.
Lisa?
Yeah, first, thanks to the Bear Creek kids. I know they're not here anymore, but that was fantastic. So we had just finished prior to this a work session discussing the resolution that we want to do around the K3 LGBTQ issue, as well as adding it to our legislative platform. And I believe for folks who are paying attention to this issue, that we've agreed that we'll see that on study next week and then on action at the meeting after for both a resolution and inclusion in our legislative platform. I guess I just want to add that, you know, in the 90s, I was a bisexual kid in high school in BVSD and not well-supported, and it was terrible. And by contrast, I now have a close family member, a first grader in our family, who's using different pronouns this year and who is incredibly well-supported by teachers, by staff, by students, and the difference in those experiences is pronounced. And we definitely have a duty and a sincere responsibility to make sure that we are continuing to move forward and that we are continuing to protect kids and that we are not doing anything to move backwards. So I appreciate the support this board has shown around these issues. I look forward to getting them on action, and I look forward to discussing ways that we can do more. Thank you so much tonight, Neil, Karen, and Glenda for coming to speak. Thank you so much tonight, Neil, Karen, and Glenda for coming to speak.
Stacy?
I don't have much more to add. I just want to say my thanks also to the speakers and to the kids from Bear Creek. They were so cute and so well-composed to be in front of all these adults. I was so impressed with them and everything that everyone else has said. Thank you.
Kitty, and then Nicole.
Well, I'll just echo what everybody else has said. I really appreciate the comments about the social studies content. Loved seeing the Bear Creek kids. They were just so cute, and it was so much fun. And Lisa, thank you for saying what you said. I have a daughter who was in school in the 90s and also was being, actually was told she was going to hell because she identified as lesbian. So it is important that all of our kids learn about all of our families from the very beginning. It's just crucial.
It's really hard to go last. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. I'm looking forward to our legislative initiatives and board resolutions on the topic of the K3 curriculum in social studies. Many thanks to the Bear Creek folks for taking the time and dealing with our tardiness to this night's meeting. And for those that spoke on the school bus routes, it's challenging right now, and I understand that those create challenges for our families. It's challenging for our district as well. Lastly, I just want to say that Rob and Beth and I had the pleasure of attending Grade Ed Colorado's luncheon this afternoon. The focus of that was really heavily on what other school districts are doing to support career and technical education and apprenticeships and internships for their students. And that just really shown and hit home to me how we are very much on the right track here in BVSD with the work that we were doing around Grad Plus. And I look forward to really seeing some of that work come alive, so thanks.
And I get to go last. I echo my colleague's sentiments. I know that there's a lot we could still learn about the impact of these policies or these potential policies on our LGBTQ plus students. And the poem that she cited, the language from the poem really got to me for sure. And so I think to the extent that we can continue to advocate on behalf of all our students at the state board and at the legislature and wherever we need to, I think that, I think this board has shown a very strong commitment to that, an unwavering commitment. And I'm proud to be part of a board that shows such strong unwavering commitment to all of our students, and our staff has also been leading the way on that. So thank you to everyone who stepped forward, and thank you to staff for helping us navigate that because it is a community effort, and I think we all stand united in that effort. The only thing I would add is that I had the benefit of being able to go to the Western Region National School Boards Association meeting. Is that her? No? Okay, sorry. Got all excited that maybe our speaker popped in. That was in Fargo, North Dakota, and aside from learning that I'm not the best ax-thrower, I did have a conversation with a school board member from Nebraska. And I mentioned this because we have school board elections coming up. And this school board member I have a lot of respect for from rural Nebraska, and she had an opponent running against her who was anti-everything public education. And to her credit, she asked this person to sit down with her and her superintendent to have a conversation, and she asked the super, she asked this opponent, what is it that we can agree on? How can we collaborate? What can we do together? And his response was, nothing. I just want you out of here. I have nothing to talk to you about. I want you gone. And that was his position. And I've not seen that in Boulder. I've not seen that even really in Colorado. And I just hope that as we go forward through the next couple of months of our elections and then as we start looking at school board elections, because they've become so politicized, I hope we continue the civility of the conversations that we've been able to have and that, I think it's okay to call people out when they act in ways that are uncivil. But I've never seen that in my experiences here, but I'm worried that those kinds of efforts will start to creep their way into our campaign. So anyway, it was just kind of one of my takeaways that made me really sad. The good news was, is it emboldened the school board member to fight even harder for public education. So you could see how you might want to pack up your bags and go home after something like that, but she did not. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks again to everybody, and I look forward to our collaboration together on behalf of all our students.
So I think next, is there anything else? I don't, I'm looking up at Richard. Our first information item tonight is on the 2022 CMAS PSAT and SAT assessments. I think Dr. Dilla Cruz is going to introduce this topic with Dr. Jonathan Dings.
We're just getting our presentation set up. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board. Tonight, we are here to share results with you from our most recent data, which is CMAS, PSAT, and SAT. As you know, we are measuring our, we're keeping ourselves accountable and measuring our own growth and outcomes and opportunities through our All Together for All Students Strategic Plan and the metrics that are attached to that. We're measuring the success of our work in the metrics outlined here. We're aiming to close gaps in achievement opportunities and to reduce disproportionality. Some, but certainly not all, of the outcomes that we examine as we measure our work is that of the state assessments. And tonight, we're going to be sharing those data points with you. I'm joined, of course, by Jonathan Dings, Executive Director of Student Assessment, and he is going to come on up and co-present. We're going to do a little switcheroo. Oh, yes. This is a great celebration. Really excited to share this. First and foremost, we want to spotlight some schools that we're really excited about who have made incredible gains. Four of our high support schools have demonstrated strong growth. Pioneer with a median growth percentile of 75. And just as a reminder, median growth percentiles referring to the middle-gaining student at Pioneer, in this instance, outgaining 75% of 4th and 5th grade students in ELA and math statewide. Of course, Alicia Sanchez with a median growth percentile of 63. Columbine with a median growth percentile of 61. And Cole with a median growth percentile of 41 after just one full year of implementation in their partnership with UVA and data-driven instruction implementation. And that's a nine-point gain from pre-pandemic measures and outcomes at Cole. Also notable, each of these schools has implemented data-driven instruction and have put our differentiated funding to really good use. And these, along with the hard work of school leaders and teachers and students, have resulted in really impressive outcomes. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan.
So in looking at the data, we'll be looking mostly in an area that we can relate to how well we're doing with closing achievement gaps and in terms of growth. So one of the, sort of the big lenses we would look at through the data from last spring was how does it compare to our last full year of testing and instruction, which is the 1819 school year? What we see at the elementary level is that achievement is about where it was overall, which is kind of a big deal, but that we also have other features of the data that we've had for many, many years, which are very large gaps. We might be tempted to think of the math gain by Latinx students as the beginning of perhaps gap closing. We also have a similar kind of decline in reading, so we'd look at that with caution. You'll also, in the slides, we've put free-natured lunch data there because we've announced that's something we're going to be looking at. But in the, but for the particular views that we have here, we know that those data, that we shouldn't look at the big gains as something that's a substantial change in how well free-natured lunch eligible kids are doing because we had a very large increase in the number of students who are eligible for free-natured lunch because of the Marshall Fire. So the data aren't ones we would point to as an indication of free-natured lunch eligible students being served better over time. When we look at the growth data, you know, what we end up seeing is generally growth that's comparable to or higher than what was in, what was pre-pandemic, noting that we were at limited grade levels because of the way testing had worked the year prior. So some caution would be applied, but that we would have concerns here about gaps becoming bigger, right? And the challenge of a growth gap getting bigger is that when you begin with achievement gaps, when a group of students arrives and you have an increase in those gaps over time because of growth, it just, it's a real challenge for us. At the middle level, we see that the results are about comparable last year as they were pre-pandemic in the area of English Language Arts. That wasn't the case in math. This is consistent with some other data that's seen basically statewide and even nationally. But we have some questions about middle-level mathematics achievement. We also have questions about growth, which even though it's overall positive and higher, we now have substantially bigger growth gaps than we had pre-pandemic. This is a concern that extends to high school, which shows very much the same kind of pattern about nearly comparable results in English Language Arts, in this case called evidence-based reading and writing. That's what it's called in the PSAT and SAT, which is what these are based on. But in math, a much sharper indication of a change over time and a decline. We see that in growth, while our high schools maintain high growth, growth of around 60, meaning that the middle-gaining kid in Boulder Valley outgained about 60% of students statewide, the gaps that we see here between the overall results and Latinx results are really very Access is the test given to emerging bilinguals testing their language acquisition, and we had, again, positive growth here, with our highest growth being at the elementary and the high school and overall, median growth of 59, again, positive. Finally, the science tests this year were new, so we don't have the same level of information that we have from the others. The others would show comparison against a benchmark, right, meeting or exceeding a particular standard. But what we see here is what we were given, which is the achievement percentile. What we see is that 5th and 8th grade students achieve at a very high rate overall, but also we have an idea of the magnitude of the gaps that we have. This test was also given in grade 11, but too few students participated for us to really mention the results here as an indication of how students did overall in Boulder Valley, if everybody had taken the test.
So at our August District Accountability Committee meeting, Jonathan walked principals and parents through the data that is now available publicly on our public-facing data dashboard. And anyone can follow along, check in on how we're doing. We invite our community to join us in monitoring our progress with full transparency. The link is here on the slides, and the public-facing web data dashboard can be found easily on our website. To wrap up a lot of data, I'll share a few highlights and opportunities that we're definitely aware of. The highlights here are certainly that BVSD's achievement and growth continues to exceed statewide levels. Our achievement and growth are mostly at pre-pandemic levels in the areas of 3rd through 5th grade, CMAS in English Language Arts and Math, 6th through 8th grade, CMAS in English Language Arts, PSAT and SAT in evidence-based reading and writing, and that the growth gains at our, four of our high support schools are very impressive, and those are Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, Cole, and Pioneer. We also have clear opportunities ahead of us for progress. We do believe that resuming the math pathways work will elevate opportunities for more students. We are engaging in studying our middle-level CMAS math outcomes to inform planning for improvements. We're working with our middle-level leaders and will be engaging our educators to inform an action plan for improvement in that area. We'll be working with our school leaders and educators to increase opportunities and support for Latinx students and students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch to ensure that they have more opportunities, such as advanced AP, IB, concurrent enrollment, advanced math offerings with support, and with that goal of increasing growth and achievement across groups. We're expanding our leader and educator learning in the areas of multi-tiered systems of support and data-driven instruction because we know that these practices lead to universal instruction that's more intentional and more precise. We're excited about opportunities that Grad Plus will bring students by engaging them in learning experiences that are aligned to their interests, that expand AP, IB, concurrent, and dual enrollment, and SEAL of Bili literacy opportunities, and industry certifications. We know that we have work to do. We have clear gaps to close and narrow. And with the conditions, systems, and structures that we've put in place and continue building, we do believe that BVSD is readier than ever to do that work. And with that, we will take questions that the board has.
Nicole?
Well, first, I want to say that the gains that we've made at our schools have been supported by the VA program are astounding and commendable. So congrats to all the work that you've done, the staff have done to really make that happen for our students. Question I have is, as we look towards supporting some of our medium-level, lower-level school support schools that haven't seen some of those returns from the pandemic, what does that look like for supporting those schools right now? That's my first question.
So when we think about schools who haven't performed at levels that we would like them to, schools where we have gaps in our growth and achievement data, what we're doing right now is engaging our leaders in deep dives into the data. In fact, today, at our PK through 12 meeting with all of our principals and assistant principals, we spent time rolling up our sleeves, looking at VisLab, looking at student-by-student data, and looking where students performed, where they didn't, where we know we need to support in different ways. And we asked our principals and our assistant principals to be engaging in a plan for improvement in those areas. We're right alongside them, our executive directors of schools will be right alongside them in those improvement efforts. And the expectation, of course, is that our principals and assistant principals take this work to their leadership teams and to their staff. We are at the beginning stages of that because the data is so new, but we didn't waste any time. Today, we took that deep dive into data with the intention of focusing our efforts on areas where we have gaps and areas where our schools need to be demonstrating improvement so that student outcomes improve as well. So we're right on that. Also, we spent today, and we spend every month when we get together with all of our school leaders, we engage in learning more and doing more actionable learning around multi-tiered systems of support, data-driven instruction, looking at standards-based teaching and learning, and setting the conditions in schools to improve student outcomes. And so we have, we immediately jumped right into looking at students where, or schools' strengths in their outcomes and areas for growth and making plans around that.
Thanks. And the second question, our math scores have been lackluster for a while. When you talk about access and math, access to math pathways across our system is something that I hear a lot from our community. Can you speak to some of the work that you're doing across the board to make the access to advanced coursework and the pathways that currently exist more equitable district-wide?
Well, some of the opportunities that we're offering right now are in the areas of advanced math and elementary students, middle school students. Some of those are in person, some of those are virtual. We're able to reach, of course, across many more campuses through the virtual environment. Additionally, our team, our internal district central office team has begun mapping out the work ahead of us, bringing together teachers, other stakeholders across our communities to build that pathway for advanced coursework, beginning in elementary and all the way up. We want to make sure that we're aligning that work in ways that make sense or developmentally appropriate and that we can support the work in our schools. But the first step toward that is to map out the work, which is conversations that we had just this week, planning for that, and the next will be to engage stakeholders in that, in that, the step by step definition of what we're going to be shaping, modifying, enhancing in our schools.
I'm very excited to see the progress on that. Last question, I was able to play around with Tableau on the district website with the metrics. I'm so thankful that that is up and running, and it's very easy to use. I hope our community does check that out on our website. Do we have a sense of when school, are we going to be providing school based tools that are similar to our district based schools, or are we just for now going to have district data available on the district website?
All of the data there are actually by both district and school, but there's a box you got to find in the upper right corner that if you're working on a phone is much, much harder to find, but if you're working on a Chromebook, it's there.
Is there a way for schools to be able to link to that from their individual websites? Because I was actually going to the schools and like seeing if I could find it on their website, because I couldn't find it on my phone on the district website. Is there a way for schools to be able to link from their website to our district metrics just to help parents or community members that might be interested in accessing that data?
There is a way to be able to do that. Let me work with communications to see where we are with that. I'm not sure if we've had those conversations with schools on their website development, but it would certainly make sense. We want to make sure that that data is easily accessible and everybody knows and understands where they are today. It's a big part of getting better is knowing and understanding where you are. If we don't ever own that, whether the good or the bad, then we're not going to have the information we need to improve. So let me work on that with our comms team, and I'll go back to the board on kind of where we are with that.
Richard, do you have any questions, comments?
I sure do. I just wanted to talk to the president and Dr. De La Cruz for the presentation. I think it's, it's good, we're getting some good results. But as I was looking at the presentation, I was very, very concerned. For example, if you go back to that first, one of the slides, it talks about meeting expectations or something like that, if you go back to that particular slide.
Just second, Richard, we're, Randy's running.
So this is grade three and five meeting or exceeding expectations. And then I'm looking at the Latino population, and it has 31.5% of Latinos meeting or exceeding expectations. Am I reading that correctly?
Right.
So that means that 69% are not meeting expectations. And as I go along with, even with math, for example, 24.5 meeting expectations, that tries to get the what, that number, not meeting expectations. My question is, and I know that we're doing data driven instruction, all that wonderful stuff, but what are we going to be doing with our Latino kids that are not meeting expectations? You have the high number. And do we have things in place to help achieve that? And then if we're looking at the growth, and then I'm looking at the opportunities, and we're going to try and provide more opportunities for our kids to be in more advanced classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but the majority of the students are not meeting expectations. You know, what are the plans in terms of the district getting some of our particular students to benefit from these opportunities if they're not meeting expectations?
Richard, this is Rob. You're absolutely right. I think that this is concerning for all of us. I think that these trends that we've seen over, you know, you pick the number of years, are the big problems that we're continuing to try to solve. And the numbers right now, our gaps have not narrowed. We want to be clear on that, and that's not okay. You know, my best hope is that as we think about the systems and structures that we've put in place to support individual schools, we know those are working. And we know that by looking at how we've intensely supported Sanchez, Cole, Columbine, Pioneer, and I don't want to steal the thunder from the next presentation, but we're going to talk about the school performance frameworks. But we've seen during amidst the pandemic, which by the way, I think context is important here, where most districts and the state and the national data is all trending downwards. You know, being flat's not a bad position to be in, but we have work to do. So specifically, we need to continue to create opportunities to make sure all students get great tier one instruction, which means that teachers are teaching the standards the first go around. And then we're really working to deepen our work towards differentiation through MTSS. And then also, as we shared with you when we did our last dive into strategic plan metrics, that we are ensuring that better than ever before are we ensuring that our Latino students are getting access to interventions, right? So if a student's not at grade level, it's those really those tier two MTSS strategies that teachers are using. In addition to those, access to those interventions, that those opportunities over time are designed to continue to move, to move this data in the right ways. And I think there's other things that we'll have to continue to look at. Attendance data, I think that there's overlap with discipline data as well, and I think all of these are connecting. So I think that we have our eye on the right things within our metrics and within the data that we're presenting to you today. And I believe that we have our focus on the right strategies and tactics in our schools. And I believe through our weighted differentiated funding, where we made sure that we're providing funding for our most vulnerable students, we've put our resources in the right place. As I think about the other initiatives from last year, where this year, we've ensured that our classes that have the most students in need have the lowest number of kids in elementary school, I think that makes a difference. But then it's like Dr. De La Cruz shared earlier, we have to continuously keep our eye on what we're expecting. We have to continuously have conversations, checking back what's working, what's not working, where are we at? And it's that relentless effort and focus over time that will begin to narrow and close those gaps.
Thank you very much, Rob. I appreciate that. Another couple of questions that I had, if I look at the data for Pioneer and Sanchez and Cole and Columbine, I saw that Sanchez is at the 75th percentile, I mean Pioneer, should I say. And Pioneer is a dual language school. Sanchez is not, neither is Columbine. And I wonder if that's, if that's what makes a big difference there or not. I just a question.
I would say at this point, I don't know that we've done that type of analysis. I would say that the most impressive piece of Pioneer's growth was their increases in mathematics, which I know is a focus at the school, with I believe overall growth in mathematics over around 83%, which was just significant. But so to the extent that everything else was impacted by because they're a dual language school, I don't know that I'd have that information to respond on that. We're just proud of their performance right now.
So am I. Thank you so much. In the past, we were able to get school profiles that provided some of this particular data. Are we doing that, are we still doing that or not? In terms of, if I wondered, for example, if I'm curious to see what Crestview's doing with our Latino kids, can I get a profile from Crestview? Or if I'm interested in knowing what's going on in Creekside, you know, that before we were able to get those profiles. And then in SchoolView, you were able to actually get data from SchoolView, but I'm not sure, I haven't followed up with that enough, if you can still get that same data from SchoolView or if SchoolView's even providing that. So again, my question is, would it be possible then for us board members to get these particular profiles, we can actually see how individual schools are faring, especially with our kids of color or Latino kids?
So you could access each school's individual data on our BVSD.org backslash metrics, strategic plan, metrics dashboard website. Also, the frameworks or the profiles I think you're referring to are on the state's website. And I'm not sure if we have links to the state's website on our data dashboard site, but certainly you could go to the CDE website and get that information. But whatever information you need, Richard, we can make sure that you have that. Again, I believe that we have more access to this information than we've ever had before. So whatever it is you're looking for, I'm pretty sure we can get that to you pretty quickly.
It's muted, it's on call. Doesn't want to get me off mute. Thank you, Rob. I really appreciate that. And yeah, I congratulate the district, you, for all the efforts that you've put together to make sure that our most, I'm not going to say needy schools, but the ones that have the data like we have now is getting that data. So I truly appreciate that. And just thank you very much. And again, just to reiterate, my concern is really for that group of students that are not meeting expectations and the gap. That's all I have.
Thanks, Richard. Anyone else? I just have a couple of quick questions. What were our participation rates like?
They were, they were, they were really fairly, fairly good. We in some cases out, I think we in some cases out participated the state, but as in the past, the rates were better at the elementary with some falling off at the middle, particularly towards the end. SAT participation almost matched what it had been in 2018, 19, which was an entirely different landscape as far as the amount of colleges that required that for that or ACT for admission. But the participation was not quite as high on the PSAT at grades nine and 10 as we would have seen in past years.
Which you raise a good point, Jonathan. We may see our participation rates go down a little now that so many schools are test optional, but it's not test optional for CMAS and for Colorado. So we have an interesting needle to thread on that, I think. We've participated in an accountability pilot. Will we get, and when will we get information on how we're looking on the different measures that we have and that we're holding ourselves to other than test scores?
So as far as the implementation of it being basically studied and sort of some understanding of what the impact is of the system that we have, that's forthcoming, that that'll be in this year, the final year of the grant. However, the information that we're looking at really is what's on our metrics. So it really, so the information that we'll, that we'll have is already out there. Yeah, we'll add to it in little bits and pieces over time, and we'll update these on about a quarterly basis or so. But the information that we have is fundamentally complete.
And then I just have a question, Rob, about math. We've struggled with math for so long, and I don't hear us doing anything different. We're studying it, we're thinking about it, we're trying to help students who are accelerated. But what are we doing about overall math in the district? Are we looking at curriculum changes? Are we looking at how we do things differently? Are we going to just do more of what we're doing? I'm just curious because it seems like that's kind of our Achilles heel.
You know, I'll let Dr. De La Cruz kind of add some of what she's doing. What I've seen, and I would say that we did see individual students, schools make some pretty significant growth on math. It didn't scale out to the entire school district. I do think materials is a consideration. I do think that starting at middle level is important. I do think that at the elementary level, by really sequencing the standards through our kind of instructional infrastructure work and through Atlas, and now it's not Atlas, it's our instructional playbook.
Instructional playbook and curriculum and standards pages.
So we've gotten folks better on the same page. I would say that, again, when you look at national trends, with kids being away from in-person learning, math took a significant downtick nationwide, statewide. And so I want to keep that in context of, you know, we did drop for sure. But I do think we're looking at all of that. I don't know that, I mean, ultimately, materials, instructional practices through an instructional model, making sure that we're supporting the standards, and then just taking a specific deep dive into, into the middle level where we saw the biggest drops. With middle level being, it's a little different than elementary school because you have kids on different tracks depending on when they accelerated or not. And so a deep dive in middle level, I know, is forthcoming. I don't know, Dr. De La Cruz, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, what I would add to that is that we heard resoundingly from our teachers and our leaders across K-12 that what they really need is progress monitoring and data collection tools for math. So we purchased that for every one of our schools. We had a selection that they could choose from. And so now, for the first time maybe ever, I don't know the entirety, but I think, I think for the first time ever, our schools now K-12 have tools that they can use to regularly progress monitor growth that students are making towards standards, and so that they can use that to bring to the data driven conversations so that we can ensure that our students are getting the instruction and scaffolding toward the standards that they need. And so those are new tools that are, have been put in place at the beginning of the school year, and we have, we have high hopes for those.
Do we track, because math is so tracked, and it starts getting tracked early on in elementary school, and then is the gateway to so many higher classes. Do we track the kind of socio demographics of the students that we're tracking in lower, mid, mid and higher level math? Do we know that?
It's one of our strategic plan metrics. And so if you were to look at strategic plan metrics, and you can break that up by free and reduced lunch eligibility, by, by race, by emerging bilingual, by special education. So, yeah, so we do track that, and we have all of that. And there's big gaps.
Right.
So again, I think that, you know, what we're talking about, you know, we're talking about precise investments like the progress monitoring tools, which I believe is responsive to what schools are telling us that they need, right? Now they have to use those with fidelity and then use that information to drive instruction, which is where the data driven instruction, focus, coaching, all those resources come into play. So I think that's important. And then I think that just an overall better understanding of sequencing of standards in year two is, is going to help us in addition to an elementary school with, you know, the efforts around the class size and the efforts around the differentiated funding. Some schools have purchased math coaches. Some schools have purchased literacy coaches. We haven't defined specifically what those dollars needed to be used for. We gave folks flexibility. But I do feel like that being able to understand which of those investments work along with these systemic improvements is going to continue to help us move the needle. But I think, you know, the bigger question is materials. When do we need new materials? When do we make that investment? How do we work that into our, kind of our materials adoption? I think that's a looming question for us to answer.
Thanks, board members. Any other questions about this? Otherwise, we'll move on to the district and school. Oops. Nicole, sorry.
I just have one more question.
I just have one more question. When you're talking about tools that teachers can use to sort of check in where students are, I'm thinking you're talking about iReady for math or iExcel. Or is it something like that? Or have we adopted common assessments for math for our students at different grade levels?
They're not common assessments in the way that you're, I think, what you're asking. However, the tools that we have purchased are within our assessment framework and our overall assessment map and calendar for this year, because some of them do provide those assessments that can be used as interim assessments. And so, we do have some common times mapped out for those. So, that's a big step toward using some, not only common tools, but also having a sequence, a timeline, by which we can assess students, come together, have those conversations. So, it's a step in that direction, yes.
All right, anything else? Richard, anything else before we move on to district and school performance frameworks? Okay. I think you're still up, Dr. De La Cruz.
Hello again. Jonathan and I are pleased to be, to continue before the board, to share with you at this time, the newly released district and school performance frameworks. So, we do have some, well, come on up, Jonathan.
So, as we've seen in past years, Boulder Valley is given not the very highest rating, but the next one, missing the highest one by a couple of points. We've, in the past, reached the highest one when the basic scoring was a little bit different. But we're close. What we would, what these are, of course, though, is a combination of scores on tests. Many of the ones that you've seen, in fact, all of the ones you've seen are the science, which wasn't in this year. And some other indicators shown here around post-secondary readiness, such as dropout rates, such as graduation rates, right? So, this combination is what yields the rating that we get and that's assigned to all of our schools. And what we saw, right, is that 85% of our buildings were given the highest rating that can be given. So, what's new in this data is that there's a lot of, there are a number of buildings that have insufficient data. In some cases, these are just buildings that are little mountain schools that are very small and are always going to have that rating based on size. But in other cases, it's, there's some buildings that, for a combination of non-participation and last year, not, the previous year being only one grade of reading that could be used for a growth score and one grade of math that could. So, there are some other buildings that have that same kind of thing. But overall, very high performance.
And we have some celebrations in those ratings, those outcomes, including the fact that 85% of our schools received a rating of performance. We also see increases in ratings for Columbine, Cole, Pioneer, Sanchez, Netherlands Middle Senior, and Arapahoe Ridge Campus, who are all now rated at performance. Our next steps include-
Hold on one second. Can you go back to that slide?
Yes.
You can go ahead.
Really, really excited and proud of our high-support schools for their performance rating. Our next steps include the development of both the district and school unified improvement plans, providing targeted support for schools, including but not limited to KC, who has a priority improvement rating, Angivine and Broomfield Heights Middle Schools, who have improvement ratings, and continuing to support Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, Pioneer, and Cole for, towards sustainable outcomes. We will encourage participation in state testing and will document non-participation. We are going to request that CDE assign Coal Creek a performance plan instead of an improvement plan, as they were just a couple of points away from performance. And additionally, approximately 50 students and families lost their homes in the Marshall Fire, and almost everyone in that community was impacted by the fire. Sanchez has a solid trajectory for achieving the kind of performance this spring that's necessary to be moved off the clock. And we're optimistic about the continuation of those promising practices to move toward this. And we are happy to take questions that the board may have.
Richard, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Dr. De La Cruz. Happy to see that 85% of our schools are in performance.
Eighty-five percent.
Great. That's wonderful to hear. Can you talk a little bit about how, or what does it take to get a given school that's on improvement to performance? What if you say, I know that you showed a slide in terms of what they're looking at, but is it basically on the state assessment for CMAS for the elementary schools? Let me finish my comment here, my question. Would it be like, example, let's take any given school that's on improvement, but in order for them to get into the performance level, would it be like maybe three or four or five students that would be better on CMAS? I guess I'm trying to get my head wrapped around that. How does it go or down?
Yeah, so the major factor at the elementary level is the median growth. So, and that's a little harder to just sort of put in a number on than you need to move two more students who are not meeting expectations to meeting. Most of the points that are awarded are awarded based on growth, which, from my way of thinking about it, is something that every building has an equal chance on about, right? That the comparisons are made are much more fair relative to what every building can accomplish. It is possible to reach the performance level without having high achievement if you have very high growth.
I recall where you may have, for example, in the old days that I remember is that you had subgroups as it relates to achievements or performance or growth, whatever it was. And you were able to look at any given school, and you would be able to see that Latinos are on the bottom quartile, quadrants or whatever. And they're there because X number of students were not able to make a good score on the CMAS or the, yeah, CMAS. But then people would look at targeting those kids that were not making it and do some other things with them so that they could get them up to a higher growth rate. And that would take them off performance. It was really like a targeted approach. And I think that's what data-driven instruction is coming in, correct?
So, the answer is absolutely that is a strategy, and that's what we ought to be doing, using data focused on individual kids is the hallmark of the work that's being done and the important piece of it there. The accountability system is driven, though, based on the average scale score in the median growth. So, both of which are things that can be improved by moving students largely overall and not just one at a time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you're all doing. So, thanks, and that's all I have.
Stacy, Lisa?
Obviously, the overarching theme here is that everyone's just doing an incredible job, and I want to start there and just say that this is fantastic work. But my question specifically is just around KC. And I guess I'd like to leave the question fairly broad, but just try to understand what is happening and what is our plan moving forward. I know members of our community have questions. I think the board has questions. I don't need to drill down more than that, but I'd like at least some sort of broad-stroke answer on why we think we're here and where we're going.
Certainly. I think that as we went out to KC Middle School last year as part of the teacher roundtables, we started to really dig into some of the issues. I think the immediate needs is we've brought in some new leadership at the school, who is, I know, focused on building the systems and structures that the school needs. I think that if you were to talk to teachers today, they would say that it's a different place already. And so, we're encouraged with new leadership, new assistant principal, new principal, that they've brought a focus that is very aligned to the work that we've done with UVA. I think that we're going to continue to dig into what are the supports that they need to continue to improve, and then support them in the strategies that, because they have the resources. Remember, KC was a high-support school. And so, it's not a lack of resource, right? They do have resources that I know that they're leveraging to really dig into data-driven instruction, ensure that kids are getting standards. But I will turn to Dr. De La Cruz or Robin Fernandez, if there's anything else you'd like to add. All that to say, we knew we had work to do. We didn't wait for the results to come out. We started to make improvements and made some moves at the end of last year and the beginning of this year. We continue to support KC in very intensive ways. If new leadership, schools has, you know, they need things, that we're making sure we get that for them. And then, just really trying to get them back on track to where we know they have the potential to be. But Laura, I don't know if you want anything else.
I just would expand on what you just said, and that is that the new leader has already been trained through UVA Partnership for Leaders in Education, has already put systems and structures in place that are aligned to that work, is already bringing a standards-based focus and conversations, setting up the meetings for that DDI work, as very knowledgeable in being guided by a 90-day plan, which has already also been put in place. And so, those promising practices that we saw bring great outcomes in our other high-support schools have already been put in place by a leader that was trained in UVA already. And as Dr. Anderson said, has put some incredible changes in place to enhance climate and culture, which we know is the foundation of doing great work in schools.
Thank you. I would love it if we could make sure that there's an opportunity, I think, next semester rather than this one, for the board to head down to KC and learn a little bit about where we are and what's going on there. I'm excited about our new leadership. I'm excited about everything you're saying. I also feel like I just don't have as clear of a sense with this school as I do with the others on the list of exactly what's going on, and I would love to get to know our new principal there a bit better and just see what's happening. Does that feel like a thing we can make happen?
I'm sorry, say that last school again. Can we go to KC? He would have you today.
I don't think that now would be a great time. I think we want to let him settle in. We want to let things get going. But I'm saying second semester, I think, would be great to stop by and see whether things have changed and how they're changing.
Yeah, I think that we can absolutely, as we think about school visits, we can absolutely put KC on the list, and I think that you all will be very pleased with what you say.
So, he was trained in this prior to coming back to BVSD?
Yes.
Well, that's a bonus.
I'm Kitty. Yep. First of all, congratulations to everybody who is involved in this. This is fantastic news, and I'm really excited that we know what's working, so we know what to continue to do. I have a question about the schools with insufficient data. How do we ever measure their performance, especially the ones that are so small they will always have insufficient data?
So, we would ordinarily just look over time and combine as many years as we need to, to get something we can look to as a basic indicator. And the two that we've had insufficient data on for a very long time, Gold Hill and Jamestown, those are schools that ordinarily have very high levels of achievement on average, when you can put enough years back-to-back to get enough kids to compute an average, often in a meaningful way. And the other two, we're just going to have a year where we're not going to have to have data because there just weren't enough kids participating in the way that CD has indicated they're working this year is. If a building has insufficient data because it doesn't have enough kids at all, then we can assign a rating, or we can make a recommendation for them to accept, which they have. But if the school got that way because of low participation or some combination of low participation and of only having fourth grade where you could get reading growth scores and fifth grade where you could get math growth, then this year's the year where they're just going to be called not enough data to know.
And are we reporting any of this, you know, like what we have assessed, I mean, what we've determined the schools are doing?
So, we have, it ends up being reported in terms of the accreditation, in terms of the plan status. So, in the same way that 85% of our buildings will have earned a performance rating automatically through their scores, there will be a couple others that will be added, and that will appear on their plan type.
Thanks. When I was at the CDE website looking at individual school performance frameworks, a lot of them had the asterisk low participation next to them. And in your slide, you'd mentioned that we're going to both encourage paperwork for opting out and participation. And I know in 2019, we had the Take the Test initiative. We decided not to do that last year because of the Marshall Fire and other extenuating circumstances. But what do we foresee doing to help increase participation, as you pointed out on your slide there, for some of our schools and our district as a whole this year's CMAS?
I mean, probably similar strategies that we've used in the past. I don't know that we have a full-on new strategy other than attention, encouraging folks to test, and being really just vigilant on making sure that if parents do choose to opt out, that we have the proper paperwork so that doesn't, isn't held against the school. I don't know that there's any new strategies that we would try.
No, only I would add that we may have entered a time, too, where parents have renewed appreciation for having the information based on not having it for a long time and with pandemic impacts being a thing that folks think about a little bit more actively. So, we'll obviously encourage participation following the law, and we'll work with schools to make sure that we document non-participation accurately and fully.
Do we know how our charters are doing, like Horizon or Boulder Prep?
Boulder Prep is an alternative education campus, and it reaches the alternative education campus performance level, as do Justice High Charter School on an alternative education campus, and Rappahoe Campus, which is an alternative education campus, but not a charter. Performance level is also at Horizon and Summit and Peak to Peak.
Maybe we could include those when we have the next presentation. It's just curious to see how our charters are doing in addition, because they have different populations, and it's just interesting to see how they will be doing. different populations, and it's just interesting to see how they will be doing. I think that's the only questions I have. Anybody else have any other questions? Richard, any other questions? It's, this is great news, Rob. Thanks. Go ahead.
Just a couple more comments, and just very, very proud of our kids, our educators, our schools. I've, for those of you that were on the board when you hired me, this is one of the big things that we talked about, right? You know, talked about, you know, what do we need to do to begin to start to see the changes in narrowing and closing gaps? And I think the very first step is that, are you doing things that you know are working and are impacting school by school, right? We took a very targeted approach, put a lot of support into a group of schools that traditionally had not been at performance, and lo and behold, almost all of them are in performance within a year that many called the toughest year in public education. So the fact that our educators persevered, our kids persevered, our district staff has worked tirelessly. They think about this day and night. How do we create the right conditions so kids can be successful? And so I'm just incredibly proud of the beginning signs of what I know there is even better work to come, that we know things that are working. We're scaling those practices. We're providing the levels of support. The, our school accountability system, the performance frameworks, these are far from perfect, and we look forward to having conversations with the state and how you can even make these things better. But I would be remiss if I didn't highlight that we're the highest-performing school district SPF in all of the Denver metro. So, you know, I don't want to clap too hard, because again, I'm not advocating for the system, and we have lots of things going our way for sure, but it's the performance in the schools that we had that were improvement that I feel like put us over the edge and helped us get to that place. And just, I think, really promising leading indicators that have just motivated us and have really solidified our beliefs on what is right. And we've got just, I think, a renewed energy around data and looking at data and using that to drive what's right for kids. And we won't rest until every kid gets exactly what they need out of our school system, and we're far away from that, for sure. But I am proud of the progress we're making.
Thank you both. So now we move to legislative update. Legislature hasn't met. We did have a work session on our legislative platform, and we're bringing that back at our next official meeting for study, and then we will bring it back after that for action. Anything else anyone wants to add on the legislative front? All right, next we will move to action items consent grouping. 7.1 personnel item, 7.2 approval of minutes, August 23, 2022. Approval of minutes, August 23, 2022, regular meeting. 7.4 acceptance of donation, Foothill Elementary. 7.5 acceptance of donation, Whittier Elementary. 7.6 addendum to AMN agreement to add contract staff. 7.7 out-of-district agreement. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Richard, I can't see you. Are you, are there any items you want to pull from consent?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Richard, seconded by Stacy. Are there any discussions or comments that we want to have on the consent agenda? Richard? Richard, any comments on consent agenda?
Sorry about that, Jeffy. No, no comment.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Chris, can you call the roll, please?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Rajpal?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Great. Next, we have agenda setting. Are there any items that we want to put on agenda? Lisa?
Yes, so we got a letter from the folks who are running the library district campaign a few weeks ago, asking for our endorsement. And when we discussed it, I think it was felt that we, rather than making a vote on whether to endorse or not, should come up with a procedure that would determine when and how we would choose to make such endorsements, and that was at our board retreat. And then I was under the impression it was going to be on our agenda in some form at the last meeting, and it wasn't. And at the end of that last regular meeting, I brought it up and was told that it would be on the agenda in some way on this meeting, and it isn't. So I would love us to discuss either the specific question of endorsing the library measure or the general question of how we would do endorsements at our next meeting.
Okay. Any other agenda setting requests? Richard? All right, do we have, sorry, Richard, yes?
Sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.